Is the selectmen's meeting October eighth, two thousand nine. First order of business salute to the American flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do you have approval of agenda?
I make a motion we approve the agenda as written.
Second.
All in favor? Approval of the minutes of last meeting?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of last meeting as written.
I'll second.
All in favor? Signing of the warrants. Cable committee update?
Well, as you know, we did a lot of work over the weekend, tried some new processes and some new equipment. And I think that Scott and I have resolved the quality issues. I don't know if anybody saw the selectmen's meeting on the air, but the audio is a lot better and the video is a lot better. And so now I have to go back and fix a lot of the older stuff that we have that we still want to air. So it should all be, you know, of that quality. I've been getting a lot of emails from different residents, which is nice, you know, with feedback about this and that, you know. And so I just encourage people to continue doing that. And things are moving quite nicely, along quite nicely.
Alright, thank you. Road committee update. The road committee did nothing this week. Hope we haven't.
What do you mean we did nothing this week?
There was nobody getting up, I thought.
You're behind time, sir.
We've got the counters out on the first five roads that we're checking. And the first of the week, those will be changed to five different roads. In the end, we will have a count on ten roads to work with. That information will be shared with the state. And I guess that's about all there is to it for now. We'll let you know what happens.
I went over one of those tonight. It's beautiful, I thought.
Where are they? Which road are they down right now?
The one I went over was county.
Yeah, it's not the county.
Yes, county road. Okay. Okay, under new business, the first thing is a required public hearing. On the general assistance ordinance for any public questions on it. So we open the public hearing for the general assistance ordinance, ordinance appendices A to C. And does anybody have any questions about the general assistance? No.
Have we, have we gone up from last year?
The amount that...
Any requests?
Do we have more?
There is, with the cost of living, they increased the food allowances and rent allowances, don't change that much. It's mostly food.
I think, Lorraine, his question was, have you had more people requesting?
This year, yes. And winter hasn't come yet. And that is, we've had some big up requests, you know, that, that there are people that are out of work. And unfortunately, well, during the winter, the Centromane power, they don't shut people's power off for non-payment. But come good weather, then they can shut the power off. So many of these people have not paid their power during the winter and they're left with a big bill. And if they've got children in the home and one school started, I have to help them with it. I don't pay the whole thing, but I will pay, I pay a given amount that Centromane demands, X number of dollars. And this is one of the things that's, that's been the biggest problem recently.
And, and so the people know, in anticipation of this, we did increase the dollar amount in the general assistance line this year. Hopefully it's enough, but we did increase it by quite a bit this year, so.
Is there any guidelines, Lorraine, that you have to abide with these people that come in?
On this next, we're gonna be adopting the ordinance, I'll read some of it.
Okay.
When we get to, there are some numbers that are here.
The only, the only thing that's really in question that I have is with a huge cut in the selectmen's pay. I've been arguing with Lorraine whether or not I'd qualify for this and she keeps telling me no. But that could go to arbitration, I'm not sure.
Okay, any other comment on the public hearing on the GA ordinance? Okay, the hearing is closed and we will go on to number two, which is the adoption of the GA appendices A to C. So this is the general assistance ordinance. The municipality of Acton adopts the MMA model ordinance GA appendices for the period of October first, two thousand nine, to October first, two thousand ten. They are filed with the Department of Health and Human Services. So some of the, just, I'm not gonna read them all, but overall maximums, they have amounts in here. And this is all public information, if you wanted a copy of it. Let's see. Maximum for one person in the household, and this is seven hundred and eighteen dollars. And this is from overall...
That is salary, this is what they're allowed, seven hundred. If they are earning more than seven hundred dollars, they don't qualify.
Right.
That's the amount they put qualification.
And then it goes up with how many people in the household. There's two people, it's seven forty-six, three people, nine forty-eight, four people, one-one-three-four. And each additional person after, and five people, one-two-three-nine, one thousand two thirty-nine. Anybody after that is seventy-five dollars more a month. And then they have food maximums for the number of people in the household. So one person maximum of two hundred dollars a month or forty-six, fifty-one a week. Gives you an idea of how much money is given, that's for food. And it goes up, six people, you could get two hundred and twenty-one dollars and forty cents a week. No more than nine fifty-two a month for first food. Housing maximums, um, five hundred and forty dollars monthly for one person. And it goes up accordingly by how many people. And unheated or heated is different.
Is that the amount of money that, Lorraine, that you can help them with for their rent or is that the maximum?
That's the, that's the maximum. Well, go back to the maximum that you started with.
Yep.
Okay.
I can give assistance up to that amount, you know what I mean? If they, if we'll say the maximum was eight hundred and their income is six hundred, then I can only give them two hundred. The difference between. And we find out where their need is, whether their need is for food or if it's for CMP or whatever.
You also have this for electricity. Without hot, electric hot water, electricity with hot water, heating fuel allowance is in here. And it goes by the month of how many gallons they will give you. Fifty gallons in September, a hundred gallons in October, two hundred and twenty-five gallons in January or February. And it goes down after that. And personal care and household supplies, supplement for households with children under five is an additional amount.
That's because of diapers.
Because of diapers. So that's a rough idea, you know, rough idea of what this is about and anybody, of course, could have a copy of this. So I will entertain the motion?
I make a motion that we adopt the GA appendices A through C.
Second.
All in favor?
Signed in the wrong place, Lorraine.
No.
I signed in the wrong place.
Did you?
I'm still... What did I tell you? She's gotta use arrows. What's my turn? Can't help it.
You signed it in the wrong spot?
Yes.
We have this ongoing thing where all of us sign things in the wrong spots, so the secretaries now have these stickers. I hope taxes are not gonna go up because we're using them. Some of these papers have like ten of them, sign here, sign there, sign there. And he still signs in the wrong spot. Alright, let's go to the next one. This I'll show you.
He's right.
Next one is assign the assessors return for county tax. This is saying that Acton pursuant to the warrant is, will pay the county three hundred and sixty, three hundred and six thousand fifty-five dollars and eighty-seven cents. And have committed this to tax collection. What if we don't pay this?
After the October thirty-first, we stop paying interest, we get charged interest.
Nine percent.
They were in town, nothing to do.
So I will entertain the motion to pay our county tax.
I'll make the motion we pay our county tax. That, that's not due all now.
That's the warrant, just the warrant.
This is just the warrant, this is...
Right, 'cause what's due now is a hundred and forty-four or whatever, right?
Just saying that, you know, it's just a, it's just paperwork that we have to do.
No, the whole thing is due.
Right now. 'Cause they, they gave us a bill for a hundred and forty-four that was due October thirty.
Okay. Because they wanted, they wanted some early.
Yes, that's all due by...
October.
October thirty-first.
October thirty-first, it's all due by...
They consider the only one, if not, a nine percent interest.
Oh, competitive annually.
I, I will make a motion that we pay the county tax, um, the Thursday before the last day of October.
Are you in a motion for that?
Yeah, 'cause I don't wanna pay it early.
That's the twenty-ninth?
Okay.
Well, maybe we better go the week before that.
Go the twenty-second?
Yeah. Yeah, I'll keep that money in our account, we'll give it to them as soon as we have to.
So the motion is to pay the bill to be...
By October twenty-second?
Second.
All in favor? Okay.
I just didn't understand it, move with the county, expect it all at once.
Maybe right there. Pull the arrow.
And they expect us to be sympathetic of the problems the county has and finances and stuff, but they obviously don't seem to really care whether we do or not.
Enough to take care of in the town of Acton. Yes, Mr. Husham, a comment on the county?
No, but what I would like to do is I would like to congratulate the board for moving in the particular direction that you just did. Because that's being as fiscally responsible as it gets. Contrary to the cheap crap that showed up in the Observer this week.
Alright, thank you. Okay. Number four, we're talking about the telephone in the town hall. Last week we kinda tabled it, we were gonna get a telephone that is gonna be available for emergencies. It's gonna be out in the town hall, where are we putting that in here, or in the hallway there, or do we know where we're putting that?
Do you know where the phone company wanted to put it?
Okay, it's gonna be in a public location, so if there's an emergency and someone's not here with a cellphone or cellphone won't work, we have a phone that's available for the public to dial nine one one and so forth.
Does this be outside or inside?
Inside the building.
It's gonna be inside the building, yeah, inside.
But it will be in the part of the building that any committee members have access to, that isn't alarmed or anything like that, so that if you're here for, you know, road committee or whatever, you can call nine one one.
I, I wouldn't think it'd be able to call.
Yeah, probably out there.
This isn't, this isn't law. You don't, anybody downstairs or whatever always has access out here, so.
We kinda figured that it's gonna cost about thirty-six dollars a month and we pretty much know we have that in the budget to cover it. It would be a good thing, so. Do we need a motion on that? Take that telephone?
I believe we do, 'cause we didn't make, we, did we move on the telephone for the, we did for the cable committee last week?
Yes.
So we should move for this one?
Yeah.
I did a...
No, no, we didn't do that for the cable, we just tabled the whole thing.
No, we're gonna go with the one.
Oh, we tabled the whole thing, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Do you want to, why don't we, instead of moving on it tonight, why don't we have Jennifer get an actual, since we had simply the three bids come in, we know that we want to go, I think, with the B C N. So why don't we actually get paperwork from B C N with a final quote on what it's gonna cost and then we can sign it when we have the...
Oh, but it's all right here.
I thought that's what she had.
She has all three, but do we want to actually have something from B C N?
That, that is from B C N.
Then it's the cheapest, that's our carrier now and it's the cheapest way to go.
Right, but the, the paperwork is not actually from B C N. That's what I was saying, do we wanna actually have like a contract with B C N? But if we wanna just sign this, that's fine?
Well, we don't have, you know, we can get a con, we're gonna get a contract afterwards, just as long as we okay the amount.
Yeah, I mean, it's two hundred and fifty dollars to run the lines and another sixty-two dollars per line to look up to the pole.
So that's the cheapest.
And then, uh, emergency is thirty-seven fifty and the one for the, uh, studio is forty-five twenty-seven. And like us, we said before, the one for the studio come out of the cable money and this other one...
The emergency one comes out of the fire department budget.
Yeah.
Yeah, you weren't even paying attention.
That's right.
Yeah, paying attention and reading the paper.
They'll, they'll pay attention when they say the fire department budget, I'm sure, and will. Right there? It's fine with you?
We were just saying that the...
He said it's fine with you.
It's okay.
He said it was alright.
Well, I make a motion then that we have these two telephones installed and have it taken out of the fireman's budget.
So you just said okay there. Alright, let's get a motion and get that...
I make a motion we accept the B C N telecom agreement.
Second.
All in favor?
Get this done as soon as possible.
Get the telephones. Okay, number five is Mr. Winchell, would like to address us up here.
Just back a month and a half or so ago, you mentioned the town equipment, the town shed and what we were gonna do with that. And I don't know if anybody's gone over, any ideas, whether or not we're gonna put the, put the D six out to bid and those Bryant Sanders or what your, your suggestions are. Really like to get an extra bay down there.
We, we, you know, we were gonna do it, put the D six out to bid, this is before you came, before Larissa came. And there was a big up, the public outcry that they didn't want us to do it, so we said we left it there. So, I mean, it's in the way, there's no use for it.
Well, not necessarily, I mean, it may be...
Not really, it, it's, you know, it's kind of outdated.
Yeah.
That's right.
We can put it out to bid, you know, to sell it. You were one of the ones that wanted to sell it.
Well, that's because I wanted to argue with you.
I don't...
You wanted to do it, so that's...
Me, myself, I, I'm just, I just like to know what we, what we're gonna do. I mean, I talked to PD about, you know, going, you know, having him come down and look through stuff there for the fire department and see what they, they had down there that was any good or whatever. And the Sanders and the Doza, whether or not we put it out to bid or we look into other alternatives, some... Scott and I had mentioned, we spoke about probably some historical museum or something possibly to donate it to or whatever.
Well, like an Al's Head, the transportation museum.
Well, you know, you got other ways, but myself, I mean, if you wanna just, I think right now we're just worried about if we put out the bid, nobody bids on it, then go that route, you know?
There are people that have mentioned they, they were interested in it.
Oh, oh, I know, I know people who are interested in it.
So why don't we, why don't we...
I was gonna say, when we began to talk about it, there are a year, a couple, ten years ago, we got requests for information about them, the collectors that collect these.
Why don't we get, get it organized so we can put a, get a...
Need a list of what we're gonna sell though, I, I don't know the...
Well, the D six, primarily the Bryant Sanders.
Primarily the D six.
Bryant Sanders, I don't think we left too much other junk right there.
And I know there's like six or seven Bryant Sanders that we don't use anymore, they're pretty much obsolete. But I solved my repinations and put it in the local papers.
Are they, are those useful to anybody, those others? Or else?
Well, I mean, we've got, the town of Acton's got, I don't know, six or seven of them, from, at least five or six. And the town's...
There's six down there, right?
Is there six down there? And then there's two stainless Sanders and only one's been in use in the last six years. So at this point in time, just the Bryant Sanders and the D six is my issue right now. I just, the, the Sanders we can put outside, do whatever with them. Um, the D six, I, I really don't wanna put outside, it's got a wooden cab and everything. I mean, I don't want to devalue it, the thing, there are people that do have some interest in this, this piece of...
Alright, so we'll get to it.
There is some sentimental value there and I just don't wanna, you know, can the thing, because I need, I need the bay, but...
I also believe, Dave, that there'll be people that'll be addressing those Bryant Sanders to...
Yeah, there, there, I'm sure there are, I'm sure there are, but at this point in time, they're just plugging up the building and...
David, would you give me a, a paper of describing the Bryant Sanders?
Yeah, yeah, I can do that, I can...
And so that I'd have something to go with, to write up an ad.
Yeah, 'cause there's a bunch of spare parts and stuff to go with them. The D six hasn't been started in, I believe, almost six years now, so I'm not sure if it runs anymore, but I'm sure it would at some point. But I can make you a list of equipment that I think we ought to unload or whatever, put out to bid and I'll try and get to you that next Thursday.
You could, you could get that to us, maybe tomorrow or something, Dave, or...
Yeah.
That information?
Yeah, that's not a problem, I can probably do that.
Mr. Winchell Senior?
Yeah, I'm pretty familiar with those, that's probably my biggest concern. I've run it since I was a kid. My father ran it, building a lot of roads around here, there's certainly sentimental value. I would make an offer to store it, no charge, move it, start it and start on my property. If you want an easement on the property, wherever it sits for insurance purpose or whatever, but absolutely no charge getting it going and moving it.
What would you, what would you do?
A lot of people doesn't understand, someday we're gonna have one of these emergencies, instead of spending these thousands of dollars riding around with a loader pushing this snow back like has been done in the past, the thousands of dollars up on Winchell Archer Road or Archer Road, whichever you wanna call it, and when them roads get plugged up, the loader will do it, but it takes a week instead of four and five hours. And someday we're gonna get buried like that. And that's one of the only things, there's not a lot of people that ask caution because they just don't, they don't pay to keep these things going and...
But is there a, a certain amount of money we have to put into it for maintenance right now?
As far as to get the thing going, I don't think, you know, I, I've got a Grader up there that's twenty-one years, twelve years, that hadn't been started. And started right up, still running, but that was twelve years, the guy told me at least, when he parked it, he backed it in and shut it off. And that's the same motor, same motor, I've got two of those, I actually got three, but two, but with that type motor. As far as the fuel, I did run that, I believe it's closer to four, might be going on to five years. I did run it, I started it every year, I was road commissioner for six years. And the last time I did use it up on Anderson Cove, it just plugged up so you could not push no more up in there. And I thought it was nice to use. I did have to change the fuel filters, all inside the fuel tank is all cobuckled up, it looks like. It's been down in the bottom of the ocean with all cobuckles inside of it, but I'm sure it's gonna need some hydraulic oil. But like I say, as far as no charge to me, if I can't get it going, it'll be a problem, but I do have faith in it. I, I would just wanna bring it before, as far as, like I say, it might, might never happen, we're gonna get one of these, Northeast and the Blizz right behind and then whatever behind it, and it can happen.
The, the, the question that you had there was basically just the space, you need the space. Yeah, that's what you need, so, I mean, that's the question.
Yeah, I mean, I, myself, right where it's sitting is just fine, wasn't the idea to try to plug up.
And the people that have, that I have heard personally say, I can't believe you wanna sell that, they've said the same thing that Mr. Winchell has just said about, you know, someday we might actually need it and, and the sentimental value. If there was a way for the town to maintain it at no cost, basically to the town, it seems like it should make everyone happy.
Well, reality is, what you said, David, I agree with as far as it running. But you also know, there's a good chance, you know, there's a lot of seals and stuff that probably are bad from sitting and they're gonna leak once you start. So it wouldn't, no matter what it ever was, cost free to, to keep it down there because you have to maintain this stuff. And I appreciate your offer. My only issue with it is, uh, the controversy that's gonna be out there. When, if the selectmen said, okay, Mr. Winchell, we appreciate your offer, please take it to your house and store it. It isn't gonna be, you're not gonna get the thing started before it's in the newspaper and letters are sent out that, something about that being on your property and it's gonna be a huge controversy. Basically, just because it's you. And I'm not so sure that it's, again, this is your decision, but I can't see how it'd be worth it to you or your family to put yourself in that position.
Position I choose.
I, I don't disagree.
If I would like to do the same, I'd, I'll just like a bid, let them do it, I'm not, I'm not talking about money.
Joint custody.
Do, do.
Well, as I said, I, I appreciate your offer.
The only, as far as I'd, I'd certainly cover the thing because it's, it's a, like it is a wooden cab.
Yeah.
And all the hydraulics and whatnot, you don't want it rusting up and deteriorating. And sitting in on top of that concrete, the tracks are certainly locked up. I mean, they still work, the last time I used it, I drove it out through the back and all, turned around a few times, back and the clutches and everything worked and the tracks worked, but I, as far as letting it go like that, I think we're making a very big mistake. We can't take it outside the garage and leave it. It's gonna get sabotaged and burnt, just like the building did.
Yeah.
And that was set and that was, that's a shame, 'cause that could've gone right into that building. But anyway, if that's where it used to be, but...
Can we, can we think about it a little bit? We'll think about it a little bit.
Yeah, that's just what I'm gonna say, as far as...
Think about it a little bit, because...
Well, let's think about the, the D six, but as far as these Bryant Sanders, uh, they serve the town no purpose at this point because they're not gonna be used.
They're not sentimental value to Sanders.
They, they work good as, as they were.
I'm being serious.
Like you say, I have no, big passion to them, they save more hours and they did work good.
I agree with you, Dave, but they just sit there and, and we oughta get rid of them.
I think the last year we used a Bryant Sanders, the state was outlawing because of the danger of bodies up in the air all the time.
Well, I, I'm not, I don't, I'm not sure about that, but I know last year...
No, no family arguments here.
Just trying, trying to pick one with you, Dennis. No, I believe the last year that we used them, seeing as we had a heck of a time trying to get parts for them, the company that built them went out of business, so it's, it, like I said before, they're pretty much obsolete. It's something we really gotta, I mean, they're right now just plugging up space. I don't wanna make a big issue, it's not a big issue to me. One of the issues I do have though is, we're gonna have two loaders down in the sand shed this year and...
You need a place to keep.
Really oughta have a place to keep them, even if one's there for a spare, it's, it's a, you know, I think it's a good idea at least to have the space.
Is there any problem with, you know, give Lorraine the description of the Sanders?
Yeah.
If people, if, buyer beware, if they're illegal and somebody buys them, in theory, that should be their responsibility for knowing that they're illegal and...
They, they, it's probably the use, the way you use them maybe, I, you know, by running, you dump body up in the air, go down the road. I mean, the state trucks do it the other way around, but I don't know how illegal they are or whatever. But they can be used without having a dump body in the air. They can be used, I mean, Dennis used, used his without having to run his body up in the air, there are, you can do it. But it's, at this point, this day and age, it's not something I'm scrapping on the back of my truck and I don't think they've been in use since, oh, it's been eight, nine years, I think since...
Five, six?
No, you've been, you, you haven't been road commissioner for six years, so it's been eight years anyways, so, so it's been eight, nine years anyways, so...
Okay. Just as far as the issue is if we let Mr. Winchell store this, we have a generator or two that are stored on other people's property, the town-owned generators. Then nobody said anything about that. I mean, I'm not concerned about ten people that are gonna write a letter in the Observer because we stole a, a, you know, piece of equipment at Mr. Winchell's property, so...
Oh, I've got no issue with it. Oh, I, I've got no issue with it. I, I, you know, wanted to bring it out, but, uh.
I do have a quick, you know, uh, thought, okay? Last time I believed that Dozer was used, I believe we went up to Anderson Cove, right? We could use Anderson Cove, okay? For instance, you know, Bad Camp Road, tough, you know, we had a lot of snow one year, it was really hard to push back. Um, took the Dozer out, it worked great. I mean, you could get into a, a really tough area where you can't get in with a loader. And, you know, there's new laws, these laws of state are passing on, you know, assisting these, you know, private roads if there's emergencies and this and that, you know? Um, you look at the weather pattern the last four or five years, and, you know, we've, we've been getting wrecked in snow, this and that. And, you know, it may come in the point where, you know, I'm, I'm not gonna use it, 'cause I don't even know how to start it. Uh, years ago, I knew how to do it, but I couldn't figure it out now. Um, but, uh, it may come to a point where, you know, it, it may come in handy. You know, and especially if you get, get to the point where you have to start helping these, these private roads in emergency uses, you know? And, um, going to bat for my old man, um, you know, if he's willing to take this machine, write up something for the town of Acton saying that it's, the town of Acton's piece of machinery, he'll keep it up, up and running. It has not been run in six years, as far as I know. And, 'cause I don't believe anybody knows how to start it. So, it, it really be nice to know that that piece of equipment was in town, ready to be used. Say, even if it wasn't, it's not costing us a dime. And it's gonna cost someone more in pen and paper to write a complaint about it than what's gonna cost the town to take care of it.
Well, as far as the controversy, I, I was only half joking when I said something about joint custody. If there are a couple of other people that feel the same way that Mr. Winchell does about having fond memories of this machinery, or even not so fond, but just memories, period, and they want to be part of its ma- of its maintenance and, and keeping it up, I'm sure that we can, you know, it's gonna sound very frivolous, but I'm not really joking, allow other people to be part of this upkeep. You know, visitation rights, et cetera, that they, I'm sure that any controversy that would potentially come up, we can quell by openly discussing it and, and letting the options be made.
As long as you're not gonna hijack it and bring it over to Shapley and start using it over there.
Don't go there.
And as long as you promise to show our road commissioner how to start it, should we need it.
Believe it or not, we've talked about that. My brother still has a town of D, the town of Shapley D six. We did buy that.
It's like a family thing, grab all the D sixes and put them in the, in the property. Mr. Hudson.
I, I just, I'd just like to bring up the point that, uh, if Mr. Winchell or anybody else to that matter would like to store that on behalf of the town, I don't see how the town could possibly lose by, by doing that because ten, fifteen years from today, that machine isn't gonna be at worth any less than it's worth today. It's not gonna deteriorate in, in value any more than it's already deteriorated in value.
Well, I, I agree, uh, and I take my hat off to David wanting to do this. I was just wanting to lay it out there and make sure everybody understood. Uh, and I'm sure, uh, people don't understand some of the controversial things, uh, that can be out there anymore than, uh, the Winchell family does. And, uh, and, and I will say, Larissa makes a sentimental, uh, value of this thing. Uh, I wouldn't mind coming up once in a while and taking my boots off, uh, and sitting on it, because if I remember properly, that's the only way you could keep your feet warm. Uh, once I take your boots off, because your feet would freeze, uh, by not being able to move them. Uh, so, um, as I say, I, I appreciate Mr. Winchell's thing. I just wanted to put it out there and just make sure that, uh, he remembered, uh, some of the consequences, and if he's willing to take that on, uh, myself personally, I appreciate it.
Okay, so what we'll do is we'll talk about it a little more, and then we'll discuss it next week again.
So we'll get the information about the Sanders.
Information about the Sanders and try and make a decision.
Well, the Sanders, the Sanders, we, we can advertise anyway.
I really, I, I have no problem with it. I, I, I can tell you right now, I think that's fine.
Yeah, that, that, that building needs to be used what it was made for, that it wasn't made for a storage building.
I think that absolutely, but we should be prepared to have some other people say, but wait, I wanna, I wanna, and as long as we all can just get everyone, all interested parties together, you know, make it a public announcement, say, listen, this D six is gonna be housed and maintained, and, you know, interested parties let us know, and, and let's just have the conversation at the beginning.
It, it should be pretty public when this is advertised this week on, on the, the television station, so.
All right, so we'll let it sit a little bit, but I, I, I'll tell you right now, I have no problem with it. You don't, and I don't think you don't, so in, in, in essence, it's yes, but let's wait a little bit, and we'll make a final decision shortly. Thank you. Okay, going down to announcements, uh, we have a, just to say, we do have a contract from Trek Sand and Gravel of the, uh, sand that we accepted, um, last week. Um, so, we know we have this contract, and it's all set, so you, you.
I would just like to chant or initial it.
Just initial it, you know, and everything, but it's for the six dollars per yard delivered, delivered.
Yep. And the contract goes through June thirtieth.
Okay.
It's October, September.
October. It goes for one year, October. So, so that price will be set until October seventh, two thousand and ten.
I, I believe what he did was, he extended the contract in case of some reason that we have extra money and we decided to do what they did this year, put up more sand, that we were covered.
Yep, and the price won't be increased and all that stuff.
I mean, you're, you're, you're still talking a year. I mean, it's no big deal. And Larissa has some.
I have one, Larissa can go first.
No, it's not about sand, go ahead.
Okay, go ahead.
No, might as well go sand.
Okay, um, we had talked about the general assistance and about how the need is up and so forth. I expect that we should also, um, that we'll be seeing a lot more demand for some help around the holidays for foods, et cetera. And we had spoken to Mr. Anderson about being willing to, um, if we were to put back bins at the transfer station for food collection, that Mr. Anderson would be happy to bring those bins down to the food pantry to help stock the food pantry. And I thought that it might be nice to take that a little bit further and set up separate bins specifically towards the idea of Thanksgiving and Christmas, and I need to run this by Lorraine as well, 'cause it would go through her. And my idea was that if someone themselves, or if they knew of someone that was going to need some assistance, especially with holiday meals, because they are important, they, I know they're just another meal, but they're a very special meal, um, that they could see Lorraine privately if they wish to be, um, quiet about it, and she could know how many of these baskets we needed to put together. And that there could be special bins at the transfer station for people to donate non-perishable goods that are specific to holiday meals. Um, and then, in my little mind's eye, I have a vision of a fleet of us coming to the town hall on Wednesday before Thanksgiving and baking off pies, et cetera, that really do make that meal so special, and that we could include those with the baskets to send out. So that's my idea. So if you are watching or sitting and are a would-be pie maker, please let me know. And, um, if you are in need of assistance for these holidays coming up, they are important and they are special family times, and if you need help making that happen, please see Lorraine, um, and we can make sure that you have what you need on your table.
Excellent, thank you.
I would just like to ask that, uh, next, uh, Thursday's meeting, that we get an update from the Fire and Rescue Committee? We haven't heard anything from them.
They have, the Fire and Rescue Committee has disbanded until they have the study back from the, from Neil Courtney.
I don't understand the theory of that.
They, they decided as a committee that they didn't have anything to discuss until they had the study from Neil Courtney. And so they decided to adjourn until after they had received that study.
Well, maybe, maybe again, I, like I said, I don't understand, I understand what you're saying. But the purpose of the committee, uh, was to come up with recommendations of, uh, solving in-house issues and their thoughts of, um, consolidating or not consolidating or whatever. And it was my understanding that we'd have both reports, uh, to look at, uh, and have something to compare to, and make a decision, uh, looking at both reports together. That was the purpose of the committee.
I think, if I remember correctly, 'cause, um, the committee between the, the rescue, um, the president of the acting ambulance, the rescue chief, the fire chief, members of the fire and rescue, they all agreed that they didn't feel that they had in-house issues that they felt needed to be addressed. And so they didn't want to, they felt that that was unnecessary, and as far as the consolidation, um, the committee as a whole felt that they wouldn't even know where to begin to recommend that or not recommend it until they had seen what Mr. Courtney had to say.
Well, theoretically, uh, might as well disband the committee, 'cause, uh, I mean, it, it's gonna be quite obvious from Mr. Courtney's recommendation, uh, what needs to be done, so I don't see, we might as well just disband the committee, if there's no issues to deal with. I mean, that's why we're paying, uh, Neil Courtney to come up with a, uh, recommendation, and I just don't see, uh, well, number one, I'm disappointed to know that, uh, or just to find out now that, I don't know when this decision was made, but, uh, I, I just don't see the purpose what the committee would serve, then. We might as well just forget the whole thing, and just go with Neil Courtney's, uh, recommendation.
I think the people on the committee were thinking that they would take Neil Courtney's recommendations and that they would investigate them further with the help of the Warrant Finance Committee, um, and the Fire and Rescue, and the Ambulance Association, and look at his recommendations, um, each individually from those perspectives, and then they'd be able to report back to the town their opinions on that information that they were able to gather.
Well, we might as well just leave it at that, I think. And, um, I mean, at, when that report comes out, we do want their recommendation, I, I would think. Want, and we do want the, and we want the Ambulance Association's recommendation.
Right, but we wanted, the purpose was to get them all at the same time, November or sometime in December, so we could, uh, take it all in, uh, with the Warrant Finance Committee. This was our, this was our goal, the slutman's goal, to be with the Warrant Finance Committee over this and be part of it. And if you wait till Neil Courtney sings here in November, or maybe the first of December, the slowest of wheel turns, uh, you can be lucky if you have a recommendation by March or April. But hey, you guys do what you want, but I just say this, this is not, uh, the intention of the way this was set up, and I made it very clear, uh, every time, uh, what the intention was, and, uh, I, I guess at this point, as far as I'm concerned, uh, like I said, my biggest disappointment I have is not even knowing anything about it. Uh, I don't know when this decision was made. Uh, and, and my second part is, uh, you know, whatever.
I think, thinking about it, it's a miscommunication between maybe them understanding what, what we wanted them to do, or even us knowing what we wanted them to do.
No, no, I don't think so, Tony, 'cause I was very clear. I was very, very clear.
It's like when we, when we had, you know, send a letter to the, um, implementation committee. Write a letter in writing, tell them this is what we, we want you to do, 'cause they weren't getting, getting the communication from us, that this is what we wanted them to do. Maybe this is the same situation. Maybe it wasn't clear, I don't know, but, so why don't we just put it, put a directive out there? Uh, thank you.
I take my two cents worth there.
Okay, thank you.
Um, yeah, the last meeting we had was about a month and a half ago, I believe, Larissa was there. Um, we did decide at that point to hold off on having any other meetings. I think back when it was first put together, uh, the group, there was some dis- dissension in the ranks amongst different parts of the group, uh, not the group, but the, uh, between the department and the rescue. Putting the group together, I think, did what it should've done. It did straighten a lot of things out. It got a lot of things on the table. A lot of things got ironed out. Um, we don't seem to have the issues that we had six months ago. And I think the group is, is to blame for that, not to blame for that, but to, uh, you know, they're, they're the ones that, that cured a lot of that.
So you felt that that had a, that was a big accomplishment.
Yes, that was a big accomplishment. It was a very positive, uh, very positive results to that.
And that, and that was one of the purposes.
Yes. That was one of the purposes, to get everything on the table, find out where the issues were. Um, pretty much amongst ourselves, um, you know, a lot of that was able to be straightened out and ironed out, and and there was a lot of, uh, misnomers out there that, that weren't happening, so.
And so it seems like you, you, you're gonna put a lot of weight, as you should, on this professional opinion
Yes.
that's going to be given.
Very much so.
Which makes sense.
Yeah.
And you'd like to see that before you, you know?
For us to sit down now, I think, and try to say, well, you know, should we merge the two together? Shouldn't we merge the two together? We're gonna be probably stirring up a lot of things that don't need to be stirred up until we get the report. When we get the report, then we'll know on paper what Mr. Courtney has to say, what his thoughts are, and we can move forward in a positive direction.
And have you, I know you have experienced before, uh, in this, have you ever had anything like, experience with something like this before in the other towns you were in?
A little bit before, um, probably not to this extent. It, it was all usually within-house issues. And once it got on the table, a lot of it was ironed out.
Well, I, I would like to say, Ed, uh, thank you for your explanation. I, I, uh, this is really what I, I was looking for, uh, next week, 'cause I wasn't aware of, of what was going on. Uh, and that was the purpose of the committee, to iron out some of this stuff, and, and I'm glad it worked out that way. Uh, and I, I don't want anybody to think that, um, uh, discrediting anybody, uh, or disappointed with anybody in the committee, uh, because you did exactly what the goal was from the very beginning. My conversations with different people, uh, Harold and Mike Conway and, and different people on the ambulance and Denise DeAngelis was, I would much rather that you guys worked all this stuff out amongst yourselves so that the town didn't have to get involved. And as you know, it wasn't getting worked out, and so that's why we did the committee, and I, I commend the committee members for, uh, straightening this issue out. Uh, a great job. Uh, I, I guess my only, like I said, I, I had no idea, uh, where anything was or anything about it, so I was kinda taken back a little bit, uh, when I said, well, we decided not to meet anymore, uh, a month or six weeks ago. And, uh, being a slut, but, uh, you know, people do talk to me about this stuff. And I was just wondering where things was, so I was really surprised to find out that, uh, it was decided this long ago. And like I said, I didn't know anything about it.
I'll call you guys to that, maybe, you know, I probably should've made mention, but.
You just got in, you know, so, I mean, oh, thank you. That clarifies a lot. Thanks very much.
I appreciate what the people did.
Okay. Any other comment or question from the audience this evening? Okay. That's that.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
On favor.
We'll have a public hearing starting in about five, six minutes.
Four, seven, six.